Ms. County.
My neighbor was telling me, next door to the one they got, this was Bermuda and this one was Zoya. And he was eat up. Now, the Zoya yard, they didn't do anything with, and they both back up to the little wooded section.
They love Bermuda.
Yeah. We had a block top road between them and me, and there was quite a few squished on the road. For once, I was glad Orleans was fairly hefty.
Several weeks, actually.
And then the guy behind me had two or three, and he said, "You got any?" I said, "Yeah, I had fifteen or twenty, but they all seem to be coming from your house." So he went out, I guess he just did an Agent Orange out there. Oh, yeah. And you have to be particular. If you put down granules, you're not going to do any good. You have to go something heavy duty, kind of like Malibu. Of course, that stuff stays. But the few that I had, I had them pumped up for it. And the few that I had that came over the hand yard, they couldn't do well after the time. And they know each other.
Let's go ahead and call the planning commission meeting to order. Mr. Neri, do we have any announcements?
No announcements this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the July 28 minutes. You all have had a copy of that. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve. Subject any further comments?
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
In favor, yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we'll also open the public comment on non-agenda items. Or are there public comment on non-agenda items? I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. There wouldn't be any that we've received. We're going to open the public hearing at this point. We have no old business. We'll go right into new business. Mr. Neri, first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the agenda also applies to the second item on the agenda. This is a proposed amendment to the Moll-Mell master land use plan specifically involving just over 16.6 acres southwest of the intersection of Odom and Naylor Drive. You can see the staff analysis that was in your packet. This is also going to apply to item two as well. There were seventy-seven total public comment calls to my office, seventy-three in favor and four no comment. Staff is going to recommend for a due pass recommendation to the Moll-Mell City Council.
Thank you, Commissioner Neri. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Is this one parcel, is this piece part of an overall parcel?
This piece is part of forty-three acres of multifamily in that area. This rezoning would leave approximately twenty-seven acres still zoned R2.
Okay. And it's okay to have two zonings on one parcel?
There's more than that within the entirety of the subdivision.
Well, okay, but I guess this is one legal parcel, all of this, so it's going to have multiple zonings and that's okay? If we subdivide it, then those different lots can have different zonings.
Which, in fact, that's going to happen.
Okay, but as of right now, it's one parcel with multiple zoning.
Yes.
And that's...
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Roy?
Nope.
Any other commissioners? Well, if there is no comment, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we...
Oh, wait a minute. Excuse me. We did have one comment card. Steve Little?
As long as the pass is based on this, I'm okay.
Okay. So you don't need to come up and talk then. And then we also had, Mr. Wright?
I'm agreeing that it's a good deal.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, you're in the process of making a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
That we, this request, we pass on to the city council with a due pass recommendation on the changing of the master land use plan.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Same sign. That motion passes. Mr. Neri, number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the actual amendment to the Moll-Mell master zoning map. Same applicant, same property. Staff is going to recommend for a due pass recommendation to the Moll-Mell City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Any questions or comments by the commissioners? Hearing none, and I presume that you two gentlemen don't wish to comment any further?
No. No comment.
Sounds good. Okay. There is no other discussion, questions, or comments. I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We pass this on to the city council with a due pass recommendation to change a master zoning map involving one sixteen-point-six-oh-three-eight acres southwest of intersection of Odom Boulevard and Naylor Drive from R2 to R1.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. All right, moving on to item three on the agenda. Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item three is a variance request regarding Section 14-143, specifically for a swimming pool not being fully enclosed on four sides by a fence. The applicants are in the audience, as is their representative.
Commissioners, are there any questions or comments of staff? Hearing none, would the applicant come forward, give your name and address for the record, sir?
I'm George Ritter. I live at 103 Hibiscus. I represent Steve and Cheryl Mosley. I've given you all a, just kind of a summary of where I think we are on this matter. Subcommittee meeting, we raised three legal issues, essentially about the pool. We believe there is an effective natural barrier already in place on the unfenced side of it. Second one is, the pool should not require fencing because it's covered. And the third issue we raised is the retroactive application of the city's fencing ordinances. We believe it would be a retroactive application. City attorney disagrees on that point, but at the same time, he apparently has some concerns about whether there would be a retroactive application if the city required fences to be constructed on existing, around existing pools. Now, that kind of brings us just why we're here, and it has to do with the variance. And the variance has to do with the barrier on the unfenced side of the pool. And I believe you all have that material in your packets. You've probably seen the pictures of it. I don't know, some of you have already been out to the Mosley property and looked at the pool and the barrier. And Mr. Neri has been kind enough to extrapolate. I think we have four pictures here of various views of the barrier that you can look at. This, the one on the left there is, you can see Mr. Mosley. He'll give you a perspective. And that's the inlet from the Arkansas River behind him. And behind, on the other bank is the, you can see it's very heavily covered. And then this picture on the right, again, you see another view of the inlet. And the bank you're looking at there is the bank adjacent to their property, and you can see it's a very rough type of terrain. And so, right now, I'd like to call Mr. Mosley up, and he can give you some more information and answer any questions you have about the property and the barrier involved.
Yeah, I kind of, I talked at the subcommittee meeting. I'm Steve Mosley. My address is 16 Riverwood Place, Moll-Mell, Arkansas. I don't get on the podium as much anymore. Yeah, I talked at the subcommittee meeting a little bit about what we had there and what the situation was, I think. All but a couple of commissioners were able to come out and take a look. What the deal is, we've been in our house for 21 years. The house has been there for 29 or 30. The previous owners did all the fencing of our yard. And basically, instead of just doing a little fence around the pool, they took it all the way down and into the water of this inlet. The inlet's about four feet deep. It's nothing you'd want to get into. It's kind of a quagmire. It's got a lot of mud and leaves on the bottom. I actually fell in there about six years ago, and it took me a while to get out. It's just, it's hard to get out of there. The other, the other bank is about, it doesn't really show it in the pictures. The bank is about 25 feet high, and it's very steep. We've done nothing to change the situation here since we've lived here, and we've never doubted that this was a good barrier. The current law talks about having a barrier that's as good as a four-foot fence that would prevent a small child, and I'm assuming anywhere from five or under, from accessing the yard. And the description we've got in the packet that you all got is such that I think, I think a small child would not even make it across there. They'd probably perish. So it's, it's a better boundary than, than a fence would be, we think. But again, we've, we've done nothing to change anything. We never even doubted this was a good barrier. We're not asking forgiveness. We haven't built a storm shelter in our front yard or anything like that. So we, we're just saying what it is, what it is. The boundaries work great. The whole time we've lived there, we've never had little kids around or even accessing our yard. We've had no complaints from neighbors about safety, noise, or anything else. So this came about as a complaint from somebody that doesn't even live next door. They're at odds with me over another matter. So anyway, we'd appreciate your consideration. If you've got any questions, please ask them.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioners, questions of the applicant?
Questions of staff?
Staff?
Mr. Morley.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Morley, Director of Building, Code Enforcement, and Permits for the City of Moll-Mell, 23 High Trail Drive, Moll-Mell.
My question is this. If the fence becomes in disrepair, it needs to be repaired between the... I'm not for sure, for sure the ownership of the fence, whether it's Mr. Morley or his next-door neighbor on either side. And the applicant at that point in time was to come in and apply for a fence permit. Would that fence permit be approved to relocate that fence in the exact location that it is today?
I would not be able to grant a permit because those fences that extend beyond the rear property lines are in violation of our current ordinance, and all fences need repair at some point. So if a tree fell through it or it just rotted down, we would not be able to allow that. I would not be able to issue a permit. And again, it would have to come back, I guess, to this, to this board to decide whether, you know, to grant another variance for any kind of repairs.
So what would happen is, is that when that occurs, and somewhat, he's done some repair already on the fence, then the applicant, which may or may not be, because my understanding with the variance, it stays with the owner. So whoever the owner is at the time of application would be required to come back and request a variance at that point in time on the side fences.
Correct.
Does that stay with the owner or stay with the property?
A variance stays with the property. A conditional use stays with the owner.
What did I, did I misspeak?
Yeah, you said it stays with the owner.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Yeah, I meant with the property, whoever the owner is.
Yeah. And 20, 30, 40 years down the road, yeah.
So if that being the case, then if the variance is not granted, then we're in violation of the ordinance on the barrier? For the pool?
Yes, absolutely. He would need to put a fence up like everyone else in the city that has a pool, to my knowledge. Has put fences up around all sides. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That it? Any other commissioner have questions? Mr. Morley?
Mr. Morley, as long as this pool is covered, then he's not in violation.
It says a secure cover, and Mr. Mosley and I talked about that in my office weeks back. When I was out there and looked at the pool cover, it was a tarp like you get held down by boards or bricks or something. And at that time, I think it's much improved now, but at that time, it was full of enough water to drown the child just in the, in the pool. So for me, I would not consider that particular cover a, a secure cover for that. Now, I have granted an exception a couple of times for 14-147. Mike Wilson with the police department was one of them. He had a problem with his rear fence, and the fence company had the special make it, and they were having some problems. It was going to take several months. He decided to get a cover. It was one that was anchored into the concrete with grommets and covered tightly. Yeah, yes, it was very tight, and you could have a 40 or 50-pound person walk across it, and there was no problem with, with falling in. You know, in my opinion, what I saw out there was not a secure cover. And another thing about those kind of covers that you have to take off and roll up, they have shelf life. I mean, they have, you know, they're eaten up by UV radiation if they're a poly-coated. This exception calls, talks about, you know, if they're indoors, that's an exception, or if they're covered by, I've forgotten the exact terminology, but it's, it's like a bubble cover. You've seen those aluminum frame buildings that have a tight white thing that, you know, churches use for youth. You know, those kind of things are permanent in nature. These kind of poly cloth covers work wonderfully during the times that, you know, that they're maintained and in good shape. And that may be four or five years. And we've got, you know, a variance that lasts 20, 30, 40, or however long. So a cover like that would need to be, I guess, checked on occasionally or something to, you know, to see. It would be something that's kind of difficult. But, but yes, I have granted for temporary until a fence was put up, those kind of covers.
Did you have any discussion with the applicant regarding what would be necessary for compliance?
Yes, sir.
And what did that entail?
Well, essentially, to me, because of, there are so many small problems with the situation. Fences outside of the property line was one of them. But to me, a four-foot fence across the back of the property would certainly be in compliance. A cover would be in compliance, you know, as long as it was maintained and for a period of time. I did not consider the barrier in the back, and this particular section of code asks that I go out and make a determination on, on whether this barrier is equivalent to a four-foot tall fence. And I have no way, no quantitative way to make that determination. And if everything stayed as it is, I think the probabilities are certainly very small that a child could get in there. But as we know, things do change over 20 or 30 years. So I just, I just don't feel comfortable at all about issuing, because it does ask, say that I can issue that variance and write out and sign it, that it is a variance. But I don't want 20 years from now to be held either morally or otherwise culpable for some unlikely tragedy. So that's why I didn't want to sign off on that.
Well, there, go back to that other picture, Lauren. Back to the other one, if you would. I don't know if this one, no, that doesn't show it. Back to the, back to where you're at. You can see this, I think that the first, that is the first retaining wall section there in the picture on the left?
Mm-hmm.
Not for sure.
Yes.
But there is, you've been to the property, and there's a two-tier retaining system there.
Yes, yes.
Do you, do you feel that, and I know that has a set of stairs that comes up to the property, but that first, that first tier, or if you will, barrier, or that section of barrier, or portion of barrier that comes up, would that be adequate, or do you feel like that is adequate?
I do. And I talked about that. If, if that, if any section of that retaining wall is four feet tall, then that would, to me, be a four-foot barrier, and then the fence could come from that point on down.
Did you measure it? I didn't measure it.
I did not. I did not. Nor have we measured, at least I haven't seen anyone. You know, they've said it's 48 inches deep out there, but I've never seen any measurements of that. And that was another reason that I couldn't...
You're speaking of the ditch?
Of the ditch.
Of the water?
Yeah, the water. Because it says in here that the barrier must be 48 inches high, and they were saying that that's 48 inches deep, which counts as being high. I mean, you can see rocks along the edge. I don't know if it's, I'm sure Mr. Mosley thinks it absolutely is 48 inches deep, but I haven't seen evidence to that.
Is that on the property, that ditch?
To the best of my knowledge, and to the survey that I've looked at and pages, it is on the community-owned property. Property Owners Association.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Jim, I only have one comment. I don't know how the devil you even interpret this thing. To me, no matter how we come out, this section needs to be looked at and need to be rewritten. Because you do make a, you know, there's a section in here that says, "The Uniform Swimming Pool Spa and Hot Spring Code, current edition is adopted by reference." Well, that contradicts what's in here. So it's a problem. The other problem I've got is, what's the definition of a small child? What is that?
Believe me, I am struggling with, and I, I don't know. I don't have an answer. I cannot say that it is or isn't equivalent barrier. But that's why I can't sign off on it, because I can't determine that.
And in reading this, I think this says that even if that whole property was fenced properly, you have to have an interior fence around the pool, too. Didn't I interpret that correctly?
I hadn't, no, sir.
That's what I thought I was reading, as to have an interior barrier in addition to the exterior walls. But I may have misread that on...
In, in our code or in the... Oh, it's the other code.
In the other code that's adopted by reference in here. And that's why I said, this section needs to be rewritten. It really does, type of thing. I was out at the property. I looked at it. My guess is, is that from going down to where the water level was when I was there, up to where the swimming pool level, it's got to be anywhere from 12 to 15 feet. It's, that's deep that's going down through there.
The land mass, not the water?
No, well, down to where...
You're talking about the difference in elevation.
The elevation of the terrain, yeah. And then, you know, I guess where that retaining wall is, I didn't measure it, but my guess would, it's every bit of four feet.
Yeah, some of it certainly is. I think it tapers down.
Except where the steps are.
Yeah, so it does taper down. But, you know, I think the barrier of four feet is a particular vertical. My interpretation is not just an elevation change, but a specific four-foot barrier.
And the only other problem I've got is, is that that thing has been there, it's almost like it's been grandfathered in before this was even put into place or even amended and changed. So we've got that we have to deal with.
Turn that over.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yes, sir.
It's the...
Go ahead. That's okay.
Okay.
I don't have a question.
Any other questions? I do have one comment card. Mr. Corbell, do you want to make a comment?
Yes. Kevin Correll, 123 Grenoble Circle. Couple of comments. One, would a, when, if someone had purchased Mr. Mosley's house, at what point would they be aware that they're in violation? Let's say if you granted Mr. Mosley the variance.
Granted the variance, if they're not in violation.
But if I understood correctly, it's going to be with the land owner and not the property, is that correct?
No, with the property.
I misspoke.
So, okay, so would...
It would stay with the property?
Yes.
Be forever, okay.
Yeah, and then, like I said, and I think what the comment was, was if there are any alterations, anything took place on that, then there's a new set of rules that have to come into play. You know, if the fences go down, they have to rebuild them. That triggers another set of circumstances. If the pool house has to have something done to it, another set of circumstances. I understand it, and I may be misspeaking.
That was the issue with the side fences, and we traditionally don't require someone to rebuild their fences if they're out of compliance, but when they need a permit to repair, replace the fence, that at that point in time, the permit would be granted or not granted based on the ordinances in effect at that time. And hypothetically, as the ordinances are now, I think Mr. Morley said that the side fences wouldn't be approved for a variance. But we're not talking about any changes to that back property, just those side fences.
So the side fences being rebuilt or falling down would trigger that? But my understanding is the side fences aren't Mr. Mosley's property or concern?
Those side fences are already falling down. This one is.
So nothing would trigger this for the new owner unless, if that retaining wall was to fall down? You guys wouldn't know? Is somebody going to come and get a building permit to put more...
No more than a fence in disrepair that we would know. If a fence, if a rear fence on a typical property is in disrepair, we may or may not know that.
You may grant a variance for a piece of property based upon a, maybe a natural barrier, maybe not. That may be there for five years, it may not be for five years, or one year, or two years. You know, is, is the city liable if a kid, whatever the definition of a small child, having a son? I can tell you, that's great, that's great material for a young boy. Is the city liable if a boy comes, climbs up there and gets in Mr. Mosley's pool underneath a so-called strong blue tarp and drowns?
You have, you have several issues going on there, but in all of those, no.
Okay.
If you're asking about legal liability.
Anything else?
And legal liability for the city, and also my other concern was, is the new homeowner, if they were to purchase the house, are they going to be made aware, how is a new owner made aware? Well, I guess it's not an issue if you're going to grant it with the...
If the variance is granted, then the new owner isn't out of compliance when they buy the house. Does that make sense?
They are out of compliance?
They are not out of compliance.
Right, because it would be with the land.
Correct.
Okay. So then it's just a matter of, is that natural barrier going to, I mean, is that a natural barrier, and will it always remain the way it is?
I have a question before. And I know that he wants to speak, but I want a clarification by our city attorney on something. My concern is, and I have a lot of understanding that this is the way that it's always been, but, you know, you've got to be very careful about what, when you push the domino, where it falls. And not saying, I guess this will be particular with this piece of property, is that if, if the variance is granted this evening, and, you know, if the new owner comes in, or Mr. Mosley comes back and wants to, wants to construct the fence. And I know that this is not on, you know, this is, we're not retroactively applying this this evening, and I understand that. But this is, this issue is, so to me, it gives... that, but this is, this issue is, so, it, to me, it gives them some leverage. So my, my question is, is that if the variance is granted, how does that affect the side fence issue? Because Mr. Morley said that he's not going to grant the permit, and then it puts the applicant, whomever that is, right back here. And then they're going to say, oh, but you granted the variance, and, and the barriers that go along with that variance, that's what we're saying, you gave a, you gave a variance on the barriers, and now we have six or eight-foot section of fence that we can't permit construction on.
That's an interesting question. I think I, I get what you're saying, is if a variance is granted, does that mean that they can just tear down the two side fences?
Leave it.
And, and if there's a variance? The way I have understood the variance, and perhaps a better way of, of doing it rather than relying on my understanding is to word any motion that way, that the variance is, is waiving that back fence requirement. And that's, I mean, that's one way to do it, the, the planning commission's free to, to, to grant that variance however they want. But it'd make more sense to me if that back fence requirement was waived, whereas the side fence requirements would still remain in effect. But that's really however the planning commission wants to do it. And now that you brought it up, I'd recommend that if what the planning commission is thinking is a back fence variance, that the, the motion states that.
The way I also understand from insurance purposes is that unless the barrier's on the side fence, I don't think that you can insure as well because of the pool, but that's a private matter. I guess that's something of our concern.
But if you're talking about the creek, or the ditch, or whatever it is, it's off his property and he has no control.
But the, the barrier, either there's, I believe, Mr. Mosley, there's two barriers actually on the, you know, I look at it as a series of barriers. You have the, and that's the way that your attorney represent, sure, come on. So it's the way your attorney represented it at the subcommittee, you kind of have this, the creek, or it's not a creek, excuse me, you, the inlet of the river, and then you have, I think, is there a set of, or a retaining wall? We don't have a good picture there, but there's that one, that retaining wall there, correct?
That's, that's-
That's the second barrier.
Oh.
The, the one that's on the picture on the left.
Railroad type.
That, that is, that could be a barrier.
It's a vertical barrier, except where the stairs come up.
Right.
And then you have some river rap and some rock, too, as well. But that, that barrier could serve, or a fence, if you will. Unless, of course, if it goes, if it comes down, you would be probably in violation of your homeowner's insurance. You wouldn't be able, if, if there was an issue back there required from insurance perspective, well, that, you probably wouldn't get the claim.
Right.
If the barrier wasn't placed.
I'd emphasize, we have, have had insurance company approval. We, when we first bought the house, they came out and inspected and said, said the barrier was fine. And we changed insurance companies about a year ago, and, and they signed off on it again. It, uh, nothing's changed about the natural barrier. It's still as deep as it's always been since I've been there. The, I, I'm not sure I understood, Mr. Morley, a minute ago, from what I understood, the, there, there's some question about whether our fence extends beyond the property into the river inlet. And I, I, I thought that that had been resolved, that that was not an issue that we're here tonight to just determine whether that natural boundary was sufficient.
So the, the issue that was taken off at my request was the requirement for a variance on the side fences. And I don't think y'all need that.
Okay.
If that's a consideration for the planning commission in determining whether or not there's a sufficient barrier.
Well, if, if, if that is off the table, then there shouldn't be any reason why we couldn't get a permit to work on the fence.
This is exactly what I'm discussing. You see what?
Yeah.
You see?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And, and, and actually, and if you read the code carefully, this is another thing that you were talking about, I don't think the code requires you to have a permit to make repairs to an existing fence design. To me, it keeps talking about erection, additions, things like that in the code.
Just asked Mr. Morley that question, Steve.
Yeah.
He said yes. So I, I don't know, I mean, he's in charge of, I mean, that's your opinion.
Well, anyway.
That's your opinion.
Section one four, or fourteen, one eleven B says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to erect, construct, enlarge, alter, or replace any fence regulated by this article without first attaining a separate permit."
I want to be clear that you understand, Mr. Morley, and, and it's, it's that my, and I, to me, and you stated that, is that if, if we grant the variance, it gives leverage, whoever that is, you or someone else, to come in and say, well, I, I don't have to do anything with side fences because I have the barrier. And so what the attorney's advised us of that is just to say that we, if we grant the variances, it is only to the rear yard. So if, if somebody comes in, you're going to have to come back, or whomever's going to have to come back and deal with the side fence issue. I can't say that I agree, removing it from the agenda, I think the two are together. I, I really do. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, well, well, I would agree that you need the yard completely fenced.
But can't, do you have the ability to do that? So if, if you're required to come back and, and get a permit to, as the city attorney just, or advised us, is that a permit is required, you will not be permitted to put a fence on property that you do not own. So there ends up being a gap in the barrier.
Okay, again, I thought that was off the table. I'm, I'm confused, but.
Yeah, I think we're getting off track here on these side fences, because it was off the table. And if we're going to talk side fences, then we got to get into the legalities of the side fences, which we raised before at the subcommittee. And there is a specific requirement in those ordinances that says, these ordinances do not apply to side fences erected that were in exist, it only goes back so far, and it doesn't, by its own terms, it doesn't cover Mr. Mosley's side fences. So we can get into that if you want to, but my understanding, that was not on the table tonight. We were talking about the pool barrier variance.
Mr. Chairman?
The pool barrier variance has to do with all sides, not including the rear, but the sides as well.
You meant to say the, the rear natural barrier?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Got a question for city attorney. Okay, the variance request is to basically ignore section fourteen dash one forty-three. Is that correct? The variance request is to allow section one fourteen, one forty-three to be, does it comply in this instance?
It allows the applicants to vary from that requirement, that it be fenced on all sides.
And that's, that says basically that the owner occupant had a household of any property within the city responsible for the erection and maintenance of a fence, which must be fully enclosed, any swimming pool, which is required to be fenced pursuant to requirements of this other section. So if we grant this variance, and it stays with this property, and Mr. Mosley decides to sell this property after his kids get out of college and buy that condo in Boca Raton and retire down there, the next occupant of this house does not have to have any fence around that pool. Is that correct?
No, that's, that's kind of-
Kind of wrong.
That, that would be in line with what sort of variance was granted by the planning commission. So for example, the example I mentioned at the subcommittee meeting might be the planning commission granting a variance contingent upon the side fences remaining intact and extended to and into the inlet.
Okay, now then, in that, if we do make this contingent agreement on this variance, and Mr. Mosley goes to Florida and enjoys his rest of his retirement down there, and the new owners, how will they know about this variance?
I, I couldn't tell you how they know. If the side fences were down, whether-
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about just somebody moves in and they, the, everything is great when Mr. Mosley leaves, but the day after that, the wind comes along and blows the fence down.
Well, so even if this was fenced on all three sides, as the statute, or the, the ordinance requires, if the wind came and blew that side fence down, even if there was a, a back fence back there, they'd still be out of compliance regardless of whether the, the commission granted a variance or not.
So it depends not so much on the ordinance variance, it depends on the condition that the planning commission may put on this variance request.
I'm not sure I understand that question. If, if the planning commission chose to waive that requirement entirely?
Yeah.
Then I would say that no fences are needed. You could tear down the side fences and, and put up a, a flashing lights attracting children to your backyard. If the planning commission wanted to put that contingent upon something, and under these circumstances, a reasonable contingency would be that those side fences remain intact and as an effective barrier continuing on to the inlet.
How can we allow him to continue his fence onto property he doesn't know?
We're not allowing him to continue his fence onto the property.
You just said that. Didn't, is that not what you were saying? Continuing on?
No, sir. The, the variance could be contingent upon that fence remaining in the same place that it is right now.
But if it's, if it is torn down, then-
Then he would no longer be-
Morley's not going to allow him to build that fence back up.
Under the current ordinances, that is correct.
And we'd be in violation of, well, I mean, I, what John is saying is that if the variance is, is on fourteen, one forty-three, and that's what the, that's what the agenda specifically says, then it's giving him a variance for any barrier, side, rear, front, doesn't matter. It's providing a variance, unless it's conditioned. So he doesn't have to, that was my point, although, Mr., they may have disagreement about, well, it's not on the table. Yeah, it's because the barrier, the one fourteen, one forty-three includes barriers on all, all sides of the pool, not just on the rear.
Mr. Chairman, if you please, I'm going to address this to Chairman Todd.
Vice Chairman?
Vice Chair.
Old habits die hard. To Commissioner Todd. The question you had about how, how would the next homeowner know?
Yes.
They wouldn't, unless someone turned them in, or complained, or a code official just happened to be in that area and decides to look at the property. It, it's much the same to me as the variance this commission granted to the property owners who had the safe room installed in their front yard. Part of that was that it had to be screened. Unless that was disclosed at the time of sale, if they sold that house, the next homeowners wouldn't know either unless someone complained or some code official drove by and saw it.
I, I would just like to clarify, if, if this, if the commission's going to grant a variance, is as to the property as it is right now, it doesn't, my understanding is it's not going to, if, if, if some fence gets knocked down that has to be rebuilt, that'll have to be dealt with. It wouldn't cover that. Am I, am I wrong on that?
Yes, you're wrong on that. Section one forty-three is worded as it is, and it says all four sides.
Well, unless we put a condition in it.
That's, that's my point. If you put a condition that those side, if, if you want to bring the side fences in, and you say, as they currently exist, then would not that be accept, an acceptable variance?
You know, Caleb, didn't you come up and cite in the fences earlier, was it one eleven, about repairs, additions, alterations?
Yes.
That, is that in conflict with one forty-three? Or it stands on its own?
With regards to what?
With what we're dealing with right now, as far as the, we're talking about if something happens to those side fences.
Okay.
Tree falls on it, tornado goes through, it's gone. They got to rebuild it, it just got to get a permit. That portion says you got to do that.
Yes, sir.
At that point, if that happens, Mr. Morley's going to probably come in and just say, okay, you can do that, I'll give you a permit, but I want a fence across the back. Can you do that?
No, sir. But, so if this planning commission granted a variance contingent upon the fences remaining intact and continuing all the way to the inlet, a possible outcome could be a tree collapses on that side fence that extends into the area not believed to be Mr. Mosley's property, that Mr. Mosley would then apply, or his neighbor might apply for a fence permit and be denied with regards to that portion of the fence that extends beyond the property line. In that case, there'd be a gap in the fence, and, and Mr. Mosley would be in violation of the, the contingency placed on this variancy, variance. Did I make that sufficiently confusing?
Well, it's clear.
Yeah, I understand. It's been my issue all along, same.
So in that case, he falls out of compliance because there's a gap?
Correct, and so for efficiency's sake, it may have made more sense to address both variances at the same time. However, I agree with Mr. Ritter's argument that we cannot retroactively apply the, the side fence ordinances, basically, which it would be if we tried to enforce that and require a variance at that time with the side fences.
Because then the other question you got is those fences that go down to the inlet are chain-linked? On both sides? They're on both sides. One is longer on the, on the-
That, that insurrection would be pressed prior to two oh six, or two thousand and six.
That's what I was going to say.
With wood fence, privacy, six five.
I would think that what you'd be talking about is the fact that the tree or something fallen on the wooden portion, or the wooden portion deteriorating such that it had to be replaced. Probably it's not going to affect the chain link.
I hate the situation that Mr. Mosley's in, for him. I, I do, and I, I'm just, I just think we, I'm trying to work through this to be very careful on a recommendation of condition, something that Mr. Mosley can live with and something that we can live with. I, I don't want to press any undue burden on him. I, I just want, want to be able to put this on the table and say, hey, this could come back in some way unintentionally, that, that could be a situation that, you know, would be undesirable, that, that we have inadvertently created, not knowing any better, because of our, you know, lack of understanding.
I understand.
No, but if, if the, the city attorney, you know, the thing about the side, I think we're getting a little bit confused with his legal representation, is that the variance they're asking is dealing with full enclosure, and some, and that does get wrapped up into the side fences, and I'm not saying about the extension, per se, but what I'm saying is that, that the intent of the ordinance is not met, when the fences in disrepair are damaged, it does not create the enclosure, so therefore the ordinance is not met. So if we can guide through the issue here of conditioning this properly to where if it's just associated with the rear, rear yard, then when the, if it goes with the property, and we do a good job of filing, so when the person comes in with the, the permit that comes in, then they're going to have to come back before the planning commission to deal with it.
Yes.
That's just all, and that may not be a bad thing, although it may seem cumbersome, that may not, for us, that, I think that could be a, a good thing on the way to handle it, so.
And if I could add, we don't know what the ordinances will be at the time when a, a permit for a fence is requested. That could be tomorrow, it could be in twenty years. We don't know whether Mr. Mosley will have ownership of that extended area or not, so it's a little bit hard to say that that fence permit would be denied, where the, the city council's currently considering ordinances that wouldn't apply in this situation specifically, but the same principle, allowing fences to continue past the property line in certain circumstances. So we don't know what that is, so we can't say that it would absolutely be denied if it was requested, just that it's a possibility that it could be, depending on the state of the property, the ownership, the ordinances at that time, et cetera.
The new fence that was put up, was there a permit pulled for that?
My neighbor went out and replaced the, the fence that, that was the damage. I don't think he got a permit. Mr. Morley, Mr. Morley said, the first, when he came out to view our yard, he initially said the boundary looked fine, and he said, if you can repair that over there, that would be great, and you've got thirty days. So my neighbor ran out real quick and fixed it. neighbor ran out real quick and fixed it.
That one, that shouldn't have required a permit.
Yes, true. I, I quit bearing a special barrier, so it's just, it's just a- At the time, I didn't realize that, I thought that was all his property and all lit up, and I thought there would be a problem in repairing that part of the fence because I thought that was part of their property. I didn't find out until later.
But even if it was his property, shouldn't he had to have a permit?
If there was a permit, generally what we do, if there's a permit for a fence on file, and you gotta put it back in the same place, we're not trying to pull money out of our citizens. If they've got a permit on file and we get the survey and make sure it's in the right spot, we'll, you know, we'll not ask for any additional permit fees and we'll allow them to repair it in the same, same place. Now, because it, you know, because there was no permit originally, that I found out later, and it was off of, it was behind the rear property line, which is also another violation.
Uh, well, the fence was originally constructed back before permits were required, so there wouldn't be one on file. Uh, the fencing was built in accordance with the laws at the time.
If I may, Mr. Ritter proposed a, a variance that, in his words, I'd like to share with you all. It's basically that the natural barrier satisfies the fence requirement with regard to that fourth side on the condition-
Let's say rear.
The rear side, on the condition that the existing side fences remain intact.
In their current position.
And in current position.
Do you want to read that, Mr. Mosley?
Sounded, sounded okay to me.
Commissioners, any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, if you please, just a reminder to the commission, this section of code is somewhat different than other sections of code in regard to variances. In other sections of code, most often, your decision is appealable to the court of record, in other words, circuit court. In this case, your decision would be appealable to the Malmel City Council.
When, when the motion moves forward, this should be in the, in the affirmative, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there any further discussions, comments, anyone that's here tonight wishing to speak on this matter that didn't turn in a card?
Chairman.
Just one comment. What we're considering as the, uh, I guess the barricade or whatever for the fourth side, rear side.
Rear side.
Rear is what I would-
Rear. It's only gonna be the part down there by the water, because that other section, of course, it's got the set stairs that goes up. So, don't get confused or put it in your mind, you've got two barriers there. The only set of barriers that we are really talking about is the rear from the water up.
Maybe a barrier and a half.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I don't, I don't think that the natural barrier, um, is owned by the applicant.
Right, right, right. Exactly.
Yeah, I don't think, in this case, it's not. I don't, for sure.
It's not, it's not if, if it's-
So, it can change.
So, we, I mean, we, 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 we'd be talking about a variance for a piece of property that he don't even own.
Yeah, the, the, what I was, and I caught on to that one earlier discussion, and, and what I had said is that there's, I would say roughly sixty-five to seventy percent of that rear yard has this, uh, retaining barrier, if you will. And I mentioned to Mr. Mosley, I said, "How about put a wrought iron fence from this, you know, from your side yard through that?" He said that he would not, uh, that he was not interested in doing that and wanted this to determine, or the applicant, he, he, he was not willing to say that he would do that, because we asked, well, I don't know for sure Mr. Morley's agreed to that either. I asked that question and I didn't get an affirmative that that would be permitted, to be honest.
Yes, yes, sir.
So-
So, if there's a fence covering the part where the stairway is, then the rest of the cross ties or whatever that is would stand as the other part of the var, barrier on the rear side.
So, your, your concern, Adrian, is that we're, we're conditioning a variance based upon a barrier that is outside the control of the applicant?
Yes.
He don't own it, right?
Correct.
Good point.
I guess where does the property line go to?
Is it where the blue line is, uh, in these one group of pictures?
Uh, the blue line is the plat. I, I consider that I own all that land up to the water. Uh, the water is part of the Arkansas River. I don't own that.
Where would your fence, where would your, in your interpretation, Mr. Mosley, where is your property line in reference to the picture on the right?
On the right, um, okay, on that, on that side of the yard, it's about fifteen feet from the water.
Right.
And then on, on the side where the picture was taken from, it's probably more like thirty feet.
And you just said, while ago, that you thought that you owned it.
Well, I'm talking about the plat line. I, I consider that I own that. We've occupied that, uh, and I thought it was ours when I bought the house. Uh, it was occupied by the previous owners. It's occupied by me. Um, so, I have not found any documents confirm that.
Well, see, that's-
Because I've been looking here the last week or two.
That's a question that I had because of the fact that that's, at one time, that appeared to have been taken care of. I mean, you got a trampoline down there, you got picnic table down there. Uh, it's flat, it's level, so, you know, did the property go to the, to the rocks?
Right, but we have a survey in our packet.
Well, it's, it's a plat. I think it's the original plat.
It's a survey.
It's a survey.
It's a survey, whatever. But I'd like to read one thing out of here. It says, uh, "In the alternative of another type of barrier," this is current, this is the current code, "if, uh, of another, if, 'In the alternative of another type of barrier at least forty-eight inches high is preferred by the responsible person, the person may use that barrier if it is inspected and approved in writing by the department enforcing this article, who shall so approve if the barrier is effective as a fence would be in restricting access by small children.'" That's the, that's the current thing, and we think, we think that natural barrier does the trick.
But is that natural barrier within the ownership of the property or outside? You know, then that, the code doesn't address that, or to Adrian's point.
Uh, we don't know for darn sure.
Well, if Corps of Engineers or somebody or, or the city wanted to come through there and-
They own, they, they own easements.
They own it?
They own easements.
Well, okay.
There is a ten-foot easement on his property. It doesn't say what the easement is, but there is a ten-foot easement there, yes.
I did find documentation where they sold an easement to the Corps of Engineers about six months before we bought the house in nineteen ninety-five.
Do you have a copy of that? Do you know where that easement is within the property?
Uh, no, I don't exactly.
Because that, that survey is before, that was part of the, the issue, well, the Corps bought a bunch of floor easements up and down.
Yeah.
And when was that? When did you buy?
It was in early nineteen ninety-five.
Corps, I have a copy of that.
And that's in June of ninety-five.
Yeah, but the, I don't, the floor easement's based upon elevation, so it's not typically a straight line.
It's on the Plasky County website. My wife found it.
Well, I still tell you that there's not a, a preference on your part from establishing an additional fence there, like I discussed with you today. You still are-
I'd, I'd still, we're, we're here to get the, the variance on the natural boundary.
Thought I'd ask for the record.
Thank you.
Well, Caleb, uh, Mr. City Attorney, sorry, do you, do you feel that this natural barrier terminology would be, um, within, uh, do you think that's within the ownership of a parcel? Or could that natural barrier be, you know, nobody, you know, we don't own the Arkansas River, Lake Willistine, uh, Lake Valencia, you know, some backyard backed up to that, that's also will be considered a natural barrier? That's probably not. So, is this natural barrier to be considered? Is Adrian's concern, um, are we outside or within the terminology of the ordinance when we consider this natural barriers outside the, the ownership of the property?
There is no requirement in this section that the barrier be on the property.
Yeah.
Name and address again, so we can get it recorded.
One, two, Kevin Corbell, one-two-three Grunoville Circle.
Thank you.
According to Plasky County courthouse records that I looked at, the, the property passed his fallen-down retainment wall, whatever that is, is owned by Malmel Enterprises, whoever that is.
Anybody have a clue who Malmel Enterprises is?
That is the company owned by Mary.
It's fallen off the con- Mary been maintaining it?
No.
Didn't think so. So, I mean, you know, you've been down there maintaining it, a prior owner's been down there maintaining it. Would you get it by adverse possession if you wanted?
There's seven conditions that have to be met.
Tough, tough.
That, that'd be a matter of just getting it of record. Adverse possession changes hands automatically, whether it's reported or not.
Gentlemen, this, he, he comes up and makes basically a hearsay statement based on his opinion on a very complicated title situation with that, that whole area of land and the history of it. So, I would, in my opinion, I would take his statement with a grain of salt.
Well, if, if I may add, I, uh, the city is currently contesting some of the, uh, the records on that, on those same webpages that are in common areas or walkways. Uh, and, and so the city's current position is that, that those records aren't necessarily accurate and that something got wrong. Not, I haven't looked at that specific area, but there are plenty of areas around town like that.
I'd like to make a motion when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
I was just gonna ask one more time, Commissioners, any other questions or comments, staff and our applicant? Mr. Thompson?
Make a motion that we, uh, approve the request for variance regarding Section fourteen, one forty-three, fences or barriers required for certain swimming pools for Steve and Cheryl Mosley, applicant with the following condition, that the natural barrier requirement in the code is satisfied only for the rear yard, fencing requirements only for the rear yard on, and on, and on the condition, so there's two parts to this, and on the condition that the existing side fences remain intact in their current position.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Posed?
No.
No. Okay, we've got, let's have a show of hands. Those that were no? Okay, yes.
Yes.
We've got three yeses and you got four no's, three no's, four no's?
Four.
One, two, three, four, four no's. That variance is denied. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, we'll close the public hearing and we'll go into the liaison reports for the, uh, City Directors Meeting. I had August first, and on that one, uh, first item came up, we had a presentation from Central Arkansas Water, uh, and a very brief from, uh, North Little Rock Wastewater. Uh, the only thing I had an objection to was the gentleman from Central Arkansas Water made mention of the fact that, "Well, at least your water bills are less than your electric bills." I just got my water bill and that wasn't the case. But be that as it may, we'll just move on. Uh, Ms. Gillen was here to just announce that, uh, what is it, uh, Bash on the Boulevard or-
Bash on the Boulevard.
Bash on the Boulevard is September tenth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Saturday.
So, that was, uh, coming up. It's gonna be held in-
Right there where, behind Cryll Lake, in front of, um, where the old Walmart Super Center used, or Neighborhood Market used to be, in that parking lot.
All right, going on to the business and unfinished business, there was a second reading of Ordinance nine oh nine. That was for Team Summit to continue to do business with the city. Next item was the first reading, uh, amending Chapter fourteen on building and building reg, regulations. Next item was Resolution sixteen dash twenty-two, authorizing the mayor to explore selling park on the river. That, uh, resolution went down in flames. Uh, that was, that was about it. There was an interest.
Do you know?
Who sponsored it?
Who sponsored it? It was Alderman Hope.
Okay.
All right, uh, Gerschner had the next meeting.
A pretty quiet meeting. Uh, there's the third reading of Ordinance nine oh nine, allowing the city to continue to do business with Team Summit that passed. Uh, second reading of Ordinance nine-ten, amending Chapter fourteen of buildings and building regulations, and Resolution sixteen dash twenty-three passed, which granted the conditional use permit to the Christian Life Church.
Okay, next month, September, first meeting is Commissioner Ramsey, second one is Commissioner Todd. Next scheduled meeting is September twenty-second. Is there any other business coming for the commission? If there is any, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
We're adjourned.
You know, I, so too, but I mean, I've been litigating a case.
Orin, was it, he didn't even-
I think it was last of the, sorry, the case, or-